Okay. Hey. You're over in what you said.
Yeah.
Call meeting to order. Appreciate everyone being here. We do the pledge, let's go around to see some new faces here. Mr. Wright, Sal Murphy, Ms. Long, I wish you know Mr. Stevens. Start it here.
Dr. Justin School, assistant superintendent of H O.
Assistant Jessica Alfonso, assistant superintendent of equity and inclusion.
Chairman, Principal Mark Burdaski.
Aaron Woodford, assistant director of special ed.
Louis Fox, executive director of elementary leadership.
I'm Jack Checo, I'm an academic professor from Chester Avenue.
Jim Butts, trainer.
Holly Duffner, executive director of secondary schools.
Brad Swallow, assistant director.
Hannah Markard, assistant superintendent for teaching and learning.
Emily Bobo, executive director of communication.
Jesswell, board clerk.
Okay, if we would please. Okay, so it's back, yeah. Let me introduce to the line of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, our. Jeff is a member of the teacher advisory. Trent is a member of the principal advisory. Our association reps. Were spoken for by Debbie in Giorgiana, they sent in some topics to talk about, they were unable to make today.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the agenda? Okay, before, I'm sorry, we're gonna re-delay 3.2 until December. That was a recap, right, so. Are your motions still in the way? For that revision, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
In motion now. Did you get my message, Ms. Power?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. All right, yeah, let's reflect that there are three present and one via Zoom and anywhere on Mr. Martin. Just won't be able to make it.
No, he's not gonna make it.
Okay. Okay, the purpose in the, the meeting is to discuss the legislative presentation on the first of November. With our legislators. And we're going to go ahead and begin. Mr. Stevens has worked out a, a presentation. I'd like for us to not have the, any one individual, we have me or Mr. Stevens, but spread the glory in the, in the ground. And so we want to assign people presentations, we want to keep it short. One thing the legislators will do, and this is not a criticism, they'll get into a conversation, so I think we'll bring the clock to that meeting. And just move it. Because I've been there and more they talk, the less we can talk and cover topics. And I think it's important if we get through as many topics or eliminate any topics, prioritize any topics we have. So I'm going, but the goal here is to make this more than just a board or superintendent presentation. We want to have people with a fire in the belly. Making your pitches and what we can agree upon, and if we need to shuffle things on this list, we'll do it. Sorry you all don't have the list, but we'll, we'll talk about it. Okay, you should begin with considering making high cost area adjustments.
Well, first of all, if you don't mind, I just want to go to, to explain to the board how we got to where we are right now. Give me just a couple of minutes. Um, so we've had, you know, our, our monthly advisory meetings. We have a regular weekly senior staff meeting. And our departments across the county have regular meetings, so. What I asked of our senior staff and our advisory and, and, you know, each, each of the different groups was, you know, what's, what's on your burners? You know, kind of what you said, what, what's, what issues do you have? This has been a process now for the past few weeks, Justice done a great job at pulling in information that was sent to her. And basically what we did is we pulled all of the topics that were accumulated by department. And by advisory groups, put all of those together, listed them, gave us, it was, it was a large group. And so gave the senior staff the opportunity to, you know, hash things out. You know, during, during one of our senior staff meetings. And what we were able to do is a number of the topics could be streamlined together, dovetailed together, and we, we've done that. For instance, you know, the finance. Consideration per state aid formula, the topics underneath it, they were brought up by a variety of different groups. So we were able to pull them together on the one topic. And I think what you'll see here is we've got 10. Pretty well standalone topics, I had to call and request, you know, remind, not request, but remind our association reps. And did get a couple of additional topics that we went ahead and, and included in this, so. The process for this was. The groups talked about what their issues were and, and what their hopes were for our legislators, pulled those together. We put all those together in a list, tried to, as best we could, dovetail all the ones that were together and. Put in there. Not really a true ranking system, but we did want to make sure that we got all of the, the major ones that, that were listed there. So what you have before you are, is the fruits of the labor of, of the departments, the advisory groups and associations that have pulled things in. Plus, there were a couple of things in there. That were supplied by some of our board members. That we, everybody felt was important and we went ahead and pulled them in there. And I just wanted to draw attention to item number 10, standalone down here at the bottom, that was an item that. We had gotten from Jack, as a matter of fact, and there's, there's some other ones, but that's just for instance. So basically what you have in front of you was going to be the top 10 ranking, then we decided to expand it to a dozen, and then we got one additional topic. So you have a dirty dozen less legislative topics here. And to go through each of them, I think, just the way that you did, if you want to ask, there, people that are here will feel free to talk to you about where that came from.
Okay. I, I was just look reviewing your staff list and the school board list and I can say some.
Yeah, a number of those are overlapping.
Okay, who, who. I, I saw Mr. Butts had a chart of cost of living in the different areas of the state and. You want to take the lead on that?
Yeah. The, the top two things up there, listed as one and two, were across the board mentioned by just about everybody. And we wanted to try to approach our legislators to let them know the need that we have in Berkeley County. Why it's a need here in Berkeley County, but we also know that we can't, we have got to. Convince everyone, this is, this is a need for the state across the board. So trying to take care of high cost area and some local. Placements for our facilities, we'll talk about, so go ahead, Jay, talk about the first one.
Okay, what, what do we have, Jimmy, a presentation?
It's going to be a combination of cost of living and the actual formula itself, stated format, because that's one of those requests will have to take place within the stated format, the test that formed. So I have some slides together about enrollment, roll through states, through all the counties. I have a chart of the GSA that shows West Virginia high cost of living areas.
Right, how long do you think it'll be?
I think it's important.
This is the meeting one, this is the probably.
I probably have, right now, eight, eight slides to make.
Okay, so could you do it in five minutes?
I get to 10 or 15, yeah.
Put down 10 minutes, I just want to see, I want to see overall, how long it's gonna be, because after a while, you're not going to have the attention. So this. This presentation's next Wednesday. It's the first time, what time?
Three o'clock.
Okay. And number two, this is the high cost of special ed students support placement, who's doing that special ed?
Yes, yes, Mr. Dilly's not able to be here with us tonight, or this afternoon, because he's in a meeting, but Aaron is covering for him, yes.
Okay, and now, are you gonna have, I know Mr. Butts was in communication with the delegate Hornby. About the high cost, he had some invoices, do you explain in a nutshell what you're gonna do? Or do you know yet?
Uh, for the presentation?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know exactly, I know what the initiatives he's requested, Mr. Dilly has set forth, but I don't know exactly what his presentation would look like.
Yeah, he, he talked to us on Monday, and probably for him, it was about five minutes would be good. If you're looking for time on that, he wants to talk about the, the need that we have here. For an in-state placement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this is the. Where we're signing purchase orders, right, for these outstate or wherever they are placed.
Correct.
Okay, so you'll have, if you, I was looking at Mr. Butts' presentation that delegate Hornby. Highlight. The, the cost right, because on that sheet, they may not know how to read it, and it'll take a lot longer, so just highlight. The actual dollar amount, and of course you won't, as, as you did, you don't betray the confidence of individuals that were served. Okay, five minutes. Yeah, I was looking at. That's, let me get my glasses here.
While you're looking at that, Jim, will, will that be able to incorporate all of the stated formula pieces in that 15 minutes, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So that's item number three as well, where we're talking about. AIDS positions in the formula, and that's everything, right? So one and three would be together in that 15 minutes.
We'll still go down through there. On the legislative list from the board members, you will be on the special ed, the cost of special education placement?
Yes.
You mean? Additional more chairs. Yes. Please introduce yourselves.
Oh, I'm Kathy Creel, school nurse at the middle school.
Okay, both of you nurses, okay.
Kathy's going. Coming.
All right. Okay. Going down through that, then we'll have some invoices to show them the, the high costs. Okay, now we're back to number three, so Mr. Butts, you're back into this area. Let's go down to the items.
He said, don't come back.
Pardon me?
That, that can all be in a 15 minute together, so one and three be together, go ahead.
Okay, well, one, one area there, we, we have discussed before, and I just. Nevermind, nevermind, I see it. Okay, pay increases for employees. How are you gonna ask for it? It's in across, the legislature has been doing, Dr. School, he would be in on this, they've been doing. Just a lump sum across the board now. It's not the step increase like 3%. Somebody has a doctor gets a higher amount than somebody who's just a BA or, or a bus driver, right?
Just in the average salary for everybody.
Okay, and it's inside the formula, they're not doing, okay, they're doing that. Okay, do, do we want to ask for a difference there, or?
I think that goes to the first request with the cost of living.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just thinking. I've seen some people quitting after 15, 20 years of service to the county, not retiring. And when we're giving us an average amount.
Well, I mean, statistically, stats show you, you try to get your first year teachers through five quickly to the same amount, so that the way they are at market. Versus waiting 20 years to get to the market rate and then slowly going, so really, a lot of states have now went from 30 steps down to 10 steps.
Okay, just to try to give them money to the.
Instead of going down that road, sticking to your first proposal would be set of money of two or three different financial options, my recommendation, we stick to the first, I don't know what Jim thinks.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we. Okay, number two, remaining to address special education aid position, not a formula. You've had the whole list, Jim. Finance staff, HR staff, child nutrition.
All that would be part of my presentation.
Okay. And, okay. Okay, number three, attendance workers, funding for additional attendance workers, is that a form of the step, or just? This is one of yours, but. Okay.
If you're asking for additional people, that would be part of step five, I believe, is support staff, is it a four? I don't know if the question is something.
This one came from the board, I'm not sure who.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's. Yes, number five. Okay. All right. Six, funding support for in-school suspension employees. Is that one of ours or one of theirs?
Yeah, that one wasn't here, Jackie.
Saying more service or make it a professional position or?
Well, service, I've done it for years, I don't know why you haven't got a teacher.
I know we used to have, it used to be a professional position.
It's been both throughout. Because it, it depended on who we could find, if you were having problems finding people, and then it bounced over this, and it's bound, it's bounced back and forth.
I know now with the special ed. Requirements for when it gets, you know, it says their IEP is supposed to be followed, all that stuff, I think it probably would. Make sense for it to be a professional position.
Well, I'll be honest with you, service people can go on IEP, usually participate in that process, so I, I don't. I think it's difficult as it is to find both employees, I think you'd have to take whatever you could get at that time when you're posting.
But it couldn't be either or. I mean, like, one school couldn't have service personnel, one school had a professional person. What you gotta keep in mind is fiscal note on the bill.
Yeah.
Make more, if, if you can do it cheaper, as far as the legislature's concerned. It helps in passing the bill, if you can do it, and we're acceptable to an alter. Okay. Okay, Ron, who would be, I know Jim will be doing this, add S R O to state aid formula step?
That'll be in his presentation, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Along with all those. Positions.
Okay, Jim, you're number four here. We've.
What is the number four?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
Yeah, they don't have that.
The 1984, so.
That would be Brad.
Okay, Brad, I ran off what Jim had shared with me. Would you like a copy, so that we're all talking on the same pages here? Now, Jim, I didn't run off all the pages, so if I committed one. You make sure you point that out. Okay, the first page I have here. Number is the average housing cost comparison, that's part of that number one thing that Jim will be doing. Go to the next page, this is a A B. And it's talking about the supplements, could you explain this page to us?
Right, see, the, the top part of this page is the Berkeley County school scale or a bachelor's degree. So as you can see in column D, it's the 1984 county supplement, so that is the amount that is subtracted from our state aid. For that degree level at the various years of experience. Down below is a county that did not have an excess levy in 1984. And as you can see in column C, the state gives them more money, simply because it didn't have an excess levy in 84. The state gives those counties more money, and our request is to eliminate the 84 county supplement. And fund us at the same level that you are funding those counties that did not have an excess levy in 84.
And so. You have to get rid of the rec decision to do this, correct?
Well, actually, we wanted to enforce the rec decision, because rec decision is about creating equity in salary scales among counties. And part of Judge Rec didn't tell us that we had to do the 84 supplement, he ordered the legislature to address the issue of inequity between counties. And this is how the legislature decided to do it at the time. So the legislature, and I think, in my opinion, one of the figures of legislature in 84 is that it didn't take into account the cost of living between counties. It was probably addressed the issue in 84, but as time has gone, you pass for 40 years, cost of living disparity grows between the counties. Now, when suddenly, the 84 county supplement is doing the opposite of what it intended to do. It was supposed to bring equity between the counties, now it's actually creating inequity between counties that have a high cost of living and counties with a low cost of living.
Some counties right now don't have a excess levy, I knew before there weren't.
About 14.
Yeah, it keeps increasing.
Yeah, so if you turn the page, page three. Um, this is really hard to read, it's really, really small. But basically what it's showing here is all the counties that, you know, had excess levies in 1984. So they have, you know, numbers across the row, that means you have an excess levy. The far right column is the total column, that's the cost, the total cost it would take, or it would cost the legislature to reverse the 84 county supplement. And I believe, if you can read the very bottom numbers, around $46 million.
You know.
One of the things we could ask the legislature to do, and they don't have to do this in one shot, they don't have to fix the 84 supplement, once you can phase it in over time.
Okay, but you're saying up in the top, back to page two of this. Okay. I'm on this page right here.
Okay.
Okay. You, you're saying get rid of column D.
Correct. So what I want them to do, start the chart of all, column six, at your bachelor's degrees, your years. You can see the state pays counties down the excess levy, $36,815. I want them to give us that same level of funding, because up above, look, our bachelor's degree zero years, we only get $34,985.
Right.
I want the same level of funding that they're giving to counties that didn't have an excess levy in 1984. And then that 1830, we can then take that money and build it on top of our current salary scales. This is the way to start down the path.
All right. Anybody have any questions? I'm just, here's what, here's what I'm concerned, you say get rid of this money, which is what you say. I don't want to stand up in Berkeley County taking money away from teachers.
Well, we're not taking money, we're beginning to, so column D is what we would grow our salary scale by. So teachers would get an additional 1,800, bachelor's degree zero years, some of these specific bachelor's degree zero years, or up to year five on this chart. Anywhere from $1,830 to $1,980, that would be an increase to our salary scales.
Okay, all right, any questions?
As long as you can get them to understand that.
They, they understand, they looked at this two years ago, Justice.
Yeah, I know they did, but I'm talking about the entire legislature, not. Just our people.
Yeah, we were just on a committee two Fridays ago, we tried to get locality pay, not, we were on a school board association. And if Mercer County, I remember it, it just went down, the two of us advocated it, and the room said that.
Yeah, there was like 15 or 16 people.
Geographically dispersed.
Right, you've got to use different language.
Well, we didn't, we didn't use the word locality. Talked every way we could, but their, their philosophy is, well, then our people will come to you. Well, not really, because that usually doesn't happen, people, mostly stay in their own area, but that's their thinking, and that's what those people use.
Brad, you're down on number four there, right?
Yes.
And you're gonna have, don't belabor it, okay, just do it, because you'll, they'll, they'll start getting, they know.
So do them 30 minutes.
They'll, they'll, the longer you talk, the more they smell. Okay. Okay, Brad, yeah, just keep, okay. The BRIM is our thing, I'm guessing, Jim, or will somebody else have the BRIM? I want to spread the base as much as I can.
Well, I can talk about it, we think that's a topic that we still need to keep in the window of time, to spread.
Well, give, give the room a flavor of what the problem is right now.
Well, last, last year in the news, there's quite a bit of information provided out. Large payouts from BRIM for cases throughout the state, and as such, they then turned around and increased the premiums. Free agency that pay into the West Virginia BRIM. And others went up, along with everybody else in the state by a significant amount. So that's important, if you have to pay for it, that wasn't. Then we would plan for early, such a process, it can't take that kind of process. And I would assume that those premiums will continue to be paid out, they got cases across the state.
What, what was our increase, do you remember off topic?
I'd have to, but it's significant.
Maybe you say 10,000, 100,000?
Hundreds.
Hundreds?
Yeah, hundreds, a thousand.
Melissa, I have overlooked you, have you raised your hand here or anything? Melissa?
No, I'm good, I'm, I'm listening.
Okay.
All right. So, in, in, in my opinion. You know, with those first three items that we've just talked about. One, two, and three, you've got three different bases, three different topics, they're, you know. Can be related a little bit. Item five is something that is across the state, and I'm sure that legislators from other districts may be bringing that up. I don't know that we need to bring that up right now, even though it is hundreds of thousands of dollars for us. But I also don't want to shoot us in the foot if we don't ask for it.
I, I'd suggest that you just, we just hand the paper called other concerns. What do you think, anybody disagree with that? They, they have it, and we'll just listen under other concerns. Because we're going to live a. Okay, number six, remove zoning requirement, that piece. I want to take this one. Just a little quick history, Ray Johnson threw, at the, from the woods, wrote up the model legislation. Dale Manuel and I introduced it. It only affects, impacts one or two counties in the state, because it's a growth issue, you have to have a certain percentage of growth in the county in order to. Qualify to be able to use this. We're going to, we want to remove the language, the requirement, that the county commission must have zoning in place before they can then. Do the. Local powers there. So the county commission has already voted, made this priority number two on their list, and we're going to try to support it in order to get impact fees. In order to build schools, and not put the burden entirely on property owners, but to have new homes which are being built in the community. Have a fee to help offset the impact of that household in the county. So that's the, that's the request. Anyone and the board members disagree with this, keep that as private?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll put that down. Delegate, I think, I was listening on the radio, has the cleanest version of this. Some of the legislators want to mandate what you use the impact fees for. The county commission is the one who's in the driver's seat in this. They're the ones who determine how it's spread out and everything else. We do not have a vote or a say in that. But I think that the county commission will work with us to help, help us in that, this first, if we can get this passed. They have everything else in place. Okay, recruitment and retention. Create a step system for bus shoppers. Jackie, do we have a, do we, well, we have a service person here?
Well, Eric submitted a step system, I think, right over the board.
Jackie, would you take that position? You're, you're on number seven there.
I'll be happy, yeah.
Okay. And number eight. The board has sent a letter. I don't think we'll need to explain to them too much about it, but I'd like to have an employee who's happened to do all this, watching videos and everything else. Trent, would you take then? Your, your, and, and bring up about your assistant principal. They're in, what, five days? You gotta get a half a day's work out of them because they're in mandated training and all this other stuff.
Trent, stop by.
Jessica, she has a paper that has it printed out, all the different training hours we have. And we sent it, we sent that to them, right? So they will have it, and you can just wait in front of them and just say, look, you know, if, if we did everything here, they're doing it on their own time, both professional and service, all support people. So stress it, you know, also give him a copy of the letter we sent to the legislators. And that, that'll help you. One of the good things is we found out that we didn't have to do as much in the county. I think the blood, the blood training was every other year, and we're doing it, and so it helped us when we, the problem came up, check around. Okay, Damon, tell us about the next one. Because you are already working on this with one of the legislators.
I just, I saw an article where a childcare center was desperate to employ these. So what they did was they offered free childcare for employees, which, of course, they got a lot of people, like, wanted to blind stain there because they're now getting free childcare. So I talked to one of the delegates, and I was like, if any way we could take this model and somehow help our employees by providing some type of supplement or something to help encourage people to maybe become employed with the school system, because we give some type of increase for those to have children, to pay for their young children, help pay for childcare. And he said, well, if I pay half, maybe, and add something, maybe, he could maybe write something or try to develop a bill to try to, let us pay some, and the state pay some. So I thought it may be that idea in terms of maybe trying to recruit and keep employees if they knew, yeah, I'm going here and I don't have to worry about my kids and that extra expense. The state's not paying me much, but at least I don't have the other, you know, the other four, five, six, seven hundred dollars a week, or whatever, how much people are paying now for childcare. It's supplemented by the school system and the state. And so I brought it to him, he said, as long as the counties are willing to pay part, he thinks that we'd go better with the legislature rather than the state paying it all. So everybody has a little bit of skin in the game. So that's one of the proposals.
Jefferson County did that years ago, and I thought they were still doing it. I don't know, they would pay their employees, like, seventy-five years ago, seventy-five dollars. For childcare, but they had to submit the bill in form to them. Now, I don't know if that is continuing.
Jackie, that sounds like a section one twenty-five plan reimbursement with employees getting an after tax. It's not new money coming in.
No, exactly, but it's, it is definitely an assistance.
We think we can do that now here. We currently have a section one twenty-five plan for parents to take depend care.
No, I'm not talking about that. I know what you're talking about, lady. This was employees were, could give the county, the board their bill. And the employees would receive a check back for childcare. It wasn't large sum then, but it was definitely something. And it was something that Service Association implemented at that time with their current superintendent. And I don't know if it's still going on or not.
I know the amount we, we had him talk about was about two hundred dollars a week for childcare.
This was like seventy-five dollars, so that tells you how long ago it was.
Two, two questions. Any other comments? Two, two concerns is that, but one, you, you do have a lot of employees who are passive child, very child industry.
Politically correct, that's good.
And so you're going to say, you're going to, you're going to get a backlash about it. You're doing it for this group or something.
And that's a fair bet.
Yeah, yeah, but, but one of the thick questions that, when he first said that, that was one of my first reactions. But Dr. Schooling, the, when we recruit new out of school people, this, this is the group that is the largest group to leave, am I correct?
Largest group to what?
To depart after a couple of years. Pardon me?
I don't think there's a trend anymore at this point.
Yeah, it's every, but, but I, I, when I thought about it, I thought, if you can help keep people at that low end, you know, like, we're talking about trying to get money down to the pockets of people at the beginning. I just thought, maybe he's right here. If you, if you stayed with the system because you have good, reliable childcare, and you're, and you get more time invested in the system, doesn't that kind of develop the institutional loyalty to your some degree or something?
It could. It's, you're going to run into, are there enough certified childcare centers? Because when you do the one twenty-five plan, there's stipulations of who can provide it, are they licensed? And so wouldn't apply to family members, so then you're going to run into some of those as well. And then where are you going to get, if they're splitting two hundred dollars? A budget money for that as well.
There was a question.
Yeah. Well, just, just what, what you said, it just, it's funny how relevant it is. We actually just had a teaching assistant at Winchester Avenue. She just quit this week, and her reasoning is she can't afford, it's because of childcare reasons. Yeah, she makes about, what, probably twenty-five thousand a year or something like that. Yeah, so she had to, so now we have an opening second grade.
Yeah, the other issue is going to be, is there enough childcare centers to provide that?
I didn't hear you.
At childcare, I mean, everyone needs a lady. At this point, are there enough childcare centers to even provide that as a benefit?
Well, any objection or support here?
No, I think it's great of you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to put you.
And Damon, Damon's going to do that.
Damon's still in there.
Well, let's carry on. I may not be here. I just got subpoenaed.
Damon. Where have you been dropped to, ladies?
No, that's my job. It's my detail. I may have to go out of state, so I can, I might be able to zoom in depending on what time.
Well, no, we want somebody here.
Okay, yeah, but hopefully I don't have to go.
Okay, we're.
Jaz, would you like to back him up on that?
On what? With subpoena?
So Peter, we're, no, like, if you were able to put down your notes in bullet form, you know, Jaz could, you know, maybe act as a backup for that. He spoke on that, he has, he can speak specifically of an incident here, which you can bring up.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to. I mean, it might, I'm going to be, I mean, it might be a little more impactful, bring a mom or something like that. But I mean, I'd be happy to help out, though, yeah.
Can I also find out what's still occurring, the non-occuring exception count, and it may as well, but I don't know.
Jaz, all we're looking for right now is somebody to present, cover these, these topics. And I agree, J A T H, mathematics, Jathematics. No, I'm just kidding, it's Jaz, as in math.
All right. Oh, I see your list and our list, dovetail on this. Who's in the tent? Do we have Van Meter or something?
That was one of the boards.
Okay, okay, I'm good. I thought the stamp thought of this as well. The, the law allows ten percent absences for students. That's eighteen days a year. And we on the board and at, at state meetings as well, people feel that the, the, the attendance issue is not being addressed. We also, just for your information, are going to have a meeting, once we can get it scheduled, with Church. Ready, ready? And a couple magistrates have approached us about maybe some things that they can help us do to support increasing attendance. So we're working on that. But what we're going to ask is that in the code where it says ten percent is allowable, we're going to ask that that be reduced down to like ten days or something like that. And so that kids aren't missing a month of instruction. Any comments or questions? Is there someone here who has a?
Well, I had asked Mr. Van Meter, but I had neglected to do that in time. He was, he could not frame himself up, so I'm just wanting to make sure that he's going to be able to be here next week. I think he'd be good for that conversation. I think it's, it's, it's important to note that the way the absence are counted, we kind of get things put together with what is an excused absence and what is considered chronic absenteeism. And I just want, I think it would be good for him to be able to speak about both of those, because chronic absenteeism, that's the, that's the one where it's ten percent. And I know that I've heard people talking about ten days and ten percent there for two different things. So the ten percent is for our chronic absenteeism numbers, and it's ten percent, one hundred and eighty days, eighteen days. And I don't think I missed eighteen days in my entire school career. Not that my mom didn't want me around, but she, she wanted me to go to school. But the ten days is actually a, something we may want to bring up with Judge Reading, because that is, there's something in code, and how I could say this much better than I can, about the excused absences and how many parents are allowed to have, and that may be what we're talking about. So I just don't want them to get confused on the chronic absenteeism, ten percent, or the ten days, you know? Because technically, doctors' excuses will always be excused, and those, there could be fifty of those. You know, so we don't want to over, we don't want to get those confused.
All right, we have a couple other items on the list here. We have one, we have some nurses here, so I know the first one.
We're just interested in all, yeah.
Pardon?
We appreciate that.
I don't know, I'm glad you're here.
The fur doesn't have to fly.
Okay. One, one, now, this is not nurses. New businesses should contribute to schools. That was one of the items brought up. What's happening is, is that the, you ever hear the expression, if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu? Well, that has happened to your school board. The, the school board is not on the West Virginia Development, I mean, Berkeley County Development Authority, and the county commission is. And so some of the money that was originally going to the schools, and I'll let Mr. Butts jump in here, without preparation here, maybe be unfair to him, but they are short-stopping some of the money and putting it into a quality of life program. And unfortunately, this board, not this board, but the previous board, which I was a member of, Jackie was, and I don't think, Dr. Murphy had us go into a room with the county commission. And they, they got us to vote for a pilot agreement with agreements. Oh, were you there, there? Yeah, and, and it's one of those times you shouldn't have stopped and thought more about what you were doing. I don't know if you were in there that day or not, Mr. Butts. Yeah, and, and anyway, on that one, I think it was the Mace's Two Power Project, we're on the record as having supported whatever they were up to at that time. But, so, so this one was from one of the board members asking that we just make sure businesses are contributing, new businesses are contributing to schools. Now, I don't know if we're talking about a little weekend business, or I think it's more like Procter and Gamble. Melissa, would you like to jump in on this one?
Yeah, my biggest concern was that we've seen a lot of businesses come in, and, you know, because of the pilot program, there's no, you know, they bring in growth to the county, but there's, you know, a new, new population and, and stuff, but we're not really actually seeing any benefits of it from revenue or anything and, and, and money coming in at all. And we're having to foot the bill for new schools, new technologies, new everything that, you know, because of the population increase as well as the, the influx of just new things happening within our society here in Berkeley County. We've got to do something that's different.
Yeah, and to, but what this power has said, I have a paper here. Fascinating, we were selling the bonds, the insay that got into the county. And we have property owners in this county, for example, Argus. They're, they have about seventy million dollars in personal property. Procter and Gamble has about forty-five million, forty-six million in, in personal property. But the West Virginia Economic Development Authority has five hundred and twenty-nine million dollars worth of property in the county. And what they do is, when a new business comes in and they need all this equipment, correct, stop me if I make a mistake here, Mr. Butts, please. If they need all this equipment, part of the incentive is, they don't buy the equipment, they pay the West Virginia Economic Development Authority for the equipment. Well, when the West Virginia Economic Development Authority owns the equipment, it's not taxed. Now, you take five hundred million dollars, and sixty percent of that is three hundred million dollars. And I think it would be class three, right, Mr. Butts? It'd be class three. So I don't know, and I know he doesn't know, or I don't know, but that's a lot of tax money. Education is subsidizing economic development. And what Ms. Power has indicated here, she's just peeled back the first layer of the onion here. There's a lot here that needs to be discussed. I'll take it one step further. This is my, with experience from the legislature that I'm in. In our state's constitution, not, not the United States, but the West Virginia State's constitution, the first obligation government has is to pay its debt. The second obligation is public education. I think this action, and I'll stop right here and say, I voted for some of this stuff back in the eighties. I made, I look at it now, and it's a mistake. We're desperate to create jobs, we're putting people to work, cutting weeds along the highway and everything else. But this is, this is one of, if, if we're going to do things, you can't take that public education now as a second step of priorities. And I think it is being in this process. I don't really want to wrestle with it before the legislators, other than to bring it to their attention. But, and I'll have to work with in-house staff and other people. There, the good thing is, is that it has brought good jobs to this community, to our parent system. The negative thing is, those good jobs are attracting our bus drivers and our teachers. The negative thing is those good jobs are attracting our bus drivers and our teachers. You know, people wanting to work for Procter and Gamble and stuff. And so it's, it's, it's good for our community, but it's also harming the system. And I don't know how to wrestle with that, but I do think the question needs to be raised. Should education be subsidizing economic development? I think I explained it correctly. If I made a mistake, I apologize. It's a touchy issue. Because we want to create good jobs in our community. It's it's raised the cost. And I think you're the one that's going to be doing the cost of living. It's it's contributed to the cost of housing. It's contributed to our shortage of bus drivers. It's, my wife pointed out to me the other day, Elaine there is active in the Farm Bureau. We used to have a lot of farmers in this community who drove buses. Now, the buses, the bus drivers are gone because the farms are gone. And now we have all these townhouses. So, you know, it's, it's and townhouses won't drive buses. So so we have, so it's it's an intricate problem that we need to address, but not on the first level, other than to point out, as Ms. Power has opened the door to and it's another factor in the cost of living. Did I answer right, Melissa?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, even if it's just a simple, you know, hey, we're going to donate all your iPads or or Google Chromebooks or something for this particular school. It's some sort of donation of some kind, some kind of investment other than, hey, we built a warehouse or, you know, a plant here. Something that that does have tangible impacts to our education system for our youth. I mean, they are our future. So we've got to figure out a way to sell that to to the businesses that are coming in.
A lot of those big decisions like that are coming from the governor's office and through the state economic development.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so how do we, how do we help our legislators, you know, discuss this with our governor and and other individuals throughout the the various, you know, even surrounding counties, Jefferson County and Morgan County? How do we, how do we do this in such a way that we can actually benefit, see see the benefits of of the businesses coming in? Because there's good qualities to them. It's just one of those, we can't keep swallowing the costs and keep getting beaten down and beaten down. It's not going to work.
Also, you know, who wants to build a cat? You know, which mouse? How do you go about doing it? We don't want to, we don't want to offend potential new employers in the community. Yeah, it's a double edged sword. But in the same breath, the the new employer coming in the community. Now, I I'm going to say this. At one time, some of the top management people didn't live in Burke County. They lived in Maryland or something. And so their children were going to other schools. And now, I mean, some were invested in the community. But but by and large, they want their employees' children to have a good school system. But when you're doing the tax breaks, it's 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 biting the system and you're hearing this dilemma. It's fun being on the school board. Okay, I'm going down the list here. Then we have a couple other items here. We have, we have the assignments here for the for the presentation. We've already talked, this was the board list, and then I have a couple others here. The look, oh. Okay, I'm going to get back to the board list. We've already talked about the local powers that that costs of special education placement. Review of mandated training hours. Reduction in number of allowable absences. Increase funding to allow for more attendance workers. Related to this one, the set of three-strikes system, funding for in-school suspension. That's tied into which one?
Number three.
Okay, now, okay, yes, number three, right and number our number seven, share costs of childcare and standards. Exponent finance pay increases. That was, that was one of the persons. We talked about new businesses. Okay, here's, here's, here's the one. Redefining nurses so that they aren't categorized as teachers. Now, I don't know where that case is, but that's one of the items that has been brought up here. Melissa. Melissa, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, just, you know, is there a way that we can help our nurses, you know, have, one of the biggest things I I remember having a conversation with a nurse, she pulled out her contract, and it's a teacher's contract. And there are things there that had, you know, needed to be crossed out because it didn't apply to her position. But that's how we have to have it classified because of because of code. And please, you know, Mr. Butts and and Dr. Schoolly, correct me if I'm wrong, the classification is not something that we can change ourselves. We'd have to go back to the legislators to see if there's a way that they can address that via code. And how do we do that appropriately? But it's, but they're classified as teachers, though.
Not necessarily, Justin. Or they are, they're classified as other professionals.
Another professional support person is their classification.
I wouldn't want to take, we need to watch that because I don't want to take anything from this that eliminates something from them.
No, and I'm not looking for that either. I'm looking for something that would be more accurately reflective of what they're actually doing. Not, they they're, the the contract that I view was a teacher's contract.
Yeah, because the state only provides one contract for professional employees, and it says teacher contract.
Correct. So how do we get that better aligned?
Is that a state department of education? The contract comes from, okay, so then that's, that's
So that's what you're asking for is a separate contract?
Yeah, yeah, just something that that accurately reflects for them. It's it's accurate then. I mean, at this point, if we're using a contract that doesn't work, that's a legally binding document. We've got to get that corrected.
Okay, Melissa, you do the presentation, but work with Justin to get the language centered.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep.
I'll put you down to that. Okay.
Did we remove the the new business should contribute to school from?
No, we didn't remove it. We we were just talking about it, and I I jumped over it, so we need to go back to that.
Well, I mean, okay. Well, no, he jumped over here. I'm order in order. What is presenting? I just, I didn't know how you were going to do that.
Okay, Melissa, that was your idea there. Do you want to, do you want to make a few calls? I don't want to get into the swamp about
Sure, no.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, we have another one here. Oh, we had a question. This is just a question for the legislators. I don't know what the answer is. But we have a lot of special education, don't have a lot, but we have special education students who are viters and they're they're harming, they're harming the employees. And I just don't know what what the answer is. I mean, but not guards in the writers or steel mesh on the horns of employees, but but it's, it's a it is a serious problem. And anybody have a suggestion? I mean, you you got to serve the children. You have to. We just need some sort of protection for our employees.
I thought the safe school should rest up a lot in the past, but I don't know how much we follow that anymore as closely as it should be. And plus, well, supersede the state code.
The the difference is you're specifically talking about special needs students and their and their behaviors and their their protected class, and there's certain things that we can do, and certain things we can't do, certain ways that they have to handle versus students that are in the general, general education, general population. So, but I did hear you say specifically talking about our special needs students.
Can you have a staff person raise the thing?
I think so. I will talk to David about that.
I mean, there has to be our employees get battered, I mean battered.
Yeah.
And there's got to be a limit to what a child can do versus how much an employee is expected to take.
Wow, that's why we're doing a lot of self-defense. Care room and a variety of different.
Two, two, three more, three more things here.
Actually, they were.
We've already talked about increased pay. One item that didn't come up, and we need, we need, and I sat down and talked with some teachers at the pecking, I think it's the kindergarten. And I didn't realize that employees are going to have to double pay in June or May and June, double their insurance payments. June, July. I don't know. Well, anyway, it's Yeah, yeah, they're going to have to pay double the thing. Also, the problem with open enrollment, when one is open, then their spouse is open at another time. And they're forced to take another year's insurance so that when they, when the spouse leaves, they are not, they're not in a position without having insurance. And so they're having to pay, you know, a period of overlapping double insurance. We need an employee to do that. Okay, go ahead.
Open enrollment is one of those items that allow you then to go back to your employer at any time and change your insurance.
And what if the open enrollment periods are, are the openings are different times?
Correct. So when each spouse has an open enrollment, that's a qualifying event for you then to go back to your current employer and make changes with your current employer.
Well, the way, way I was hearing it, they were having to pay for their spouse because of, for a whole year.
That's, that's not accurate.
Okay, we need to get some information out to the employees because they're paying more money than they have to. I mean, I don't know how we do it. Well, you work with Elaine and that, but we need to let the employees know.
One?
Or did?
Is that widespread?
I I don't know. I just was talking that, I was just at the pecking, go to the pecking lunch period for the kindergarten. And I I'm not trying to be rude or nasty with anyone. I I was sitting there and I thought I had no idea. And maybe they don't.
And in June, we do take the payment for July and August as the carryover. For teachers that request to have 20 more payments than 20.
Repeat that first.
The May and June, so no, no one would take insurance at the first pay each month. It will get to May and June, we take out a code pay period because it covers July and August. Teachers are, the thing about, we'll take the term of premiums for July and August.
Some of the kind of don't ten, that'd be very complicated because you wouldn't be able to pre-take it out. So they could actually get insurance for two months and not pay anything. You try to go to ten payments and equip before school starts.
Yeah.
You'd be needing to go in two months or trying to recoup it, which is very almost impossible anymore. So it's, it's as Jackie said, double edged sword earlier, this, this is another one of those.
The issue is we offer 20 pays to our employees. So there are improvements in employees. You cannot get paychecks in July August, so we have nothing to hold for.
Right, great. That's, I, and we'd be stuck on the Well, that's, that's
Did they also be talking about that increase we saw this year where your spouse has offered insurance, but you can't get insurance. There was some extra one we had to pay. Yeah, I wonder if that's what they're calling it now.
Well, now, there was two things to talk about. Happen to, if they drop their spouse, if if they keep their spouse, it costs them 170 more a month. Their children do not cost extra much. That's part of their plan. And then the other thing was they're telling us is they have to prepay their insurance. Some months, if they're, even if they're on a 12-month thing, I think they told us.
What do we've done that far?
Yeah.
Forty years.
Well, that's, that leads me to a
And with that one, next thing, possible increase if the, they'll just put out, does that go out for comment in the next few weeks?
Yeah.
So you're looking at another 10% increase.
Yeah. And that's, that's up at the holiday end of them.
I I don't know how to represent these employees' questions. Because we're talking, each employee may have a different question. This employee may be taking on, be concerned about their their spouse. This employee may be concerned about paying over the summer, that, you know, this employee may be concerned about reading that that there's going to be an increase coming up. So I'm not exactly sure how to present that.
Yes.
Other than PEA is
Tell, tell, tell.
PEA is messing with us.
Yeah. Let me ask this question. When they got the pay raise, some of the employees said, well, I got a pay raise, but then they took it all away from any of the insurance. So, you know, that's, that's a
Which most legislators are saying that's not true.
Yeah, that's exactly what it says. They don't get that paycheck. So
That's right.
And it's true.
Yeah. So what we need is an employee to bring in their pay stuff from last year and the pay stuff this year and just say, here, Joker, look at this.
That's easy enough to do.
I have one here.
That's just an explanation I asked her to. Okay, they're, they're the same group. And this is just an explanation on the first side of PEA, what she's talking about. And so I'll give that to Justin and Jim.
Ask, ask them, ask the employee to have somebody talk about PEA, you talk to Mr. Butts. So this is pretty misinformation. Four o'clock, 12:10. Anything else?
Yeah, I did have one other thing that I was concerned about. Was the
Go ahead, Jackie.
Well, you asked. Well, was the cooks, you know, how they, the loan amount paid for the cooks. And I know that the legislature could get something for that last year. Actually, they made a cook three, gave them four duties, and now they have to pay or not.
Well, most of one of the bigger
Yeah. But that's what, that's one of the reasons why we lose so many cooks, because the cook's pay is just there's not really any difference between a regular cook and cafeteria manager, except now I think we have to make that what do you do with them?
Most of them can't pass pure operators.
Yeah, that's right.
We're dropping that.
Well, that's was a way to give them a pay increase, was to make them shooter operator. But I mean, we have to do something with that. Years ago, it was $2 difference from going to cook to head cook. Well, who's going to do that? I wouldn't do it. I'm sure it might be $4 now, $6, but it's nothing to speak about. So
Well, I was going to say on your list, that's bus operators, creating a step system.
Justin, you can suggest anything, but there has to be Yeah, I mean, we've been following legislation for years, but it just doesn't go.
I think that's the legislation patches that move it up a pay rate.
All right, here's, while I'm putting these things together, Jackie, I'm going to put that with the bus operators, since you're going to talk about that issue. Justin could come up with something to talk about. Those at the same time.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Appreciate it. And I, do we have anything else that we didn't address? Okay, well, thank you all for coming and the work that you put in. Mike, or what? Mike, or what, who is his name, George Doris, well, we've been on nineteen eighty-four. Nineteen eighty-four is going to make the list. Good luck, Will, I still have a few to do. But let's, let's just give it a shot. Okay, motion to adjourn? Thank you. Through, all those favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, thank you.